I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Chair here.
There was a song.
I was sitting there the whole time.
You've moved up.
Yeah.
We need a motion to approve our agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close after minutes of last week's meeting.
I approve our September eight minutes. Have we had two meetings?
I'll second.
Any other discussion not all in favor?
Aye.
Close and considered. General public consent. Anybody here have a general concern? Safety issue.
I think we've got you down at nine o'clock. You bet.
Well, let's go on to discuss decision to approve or disapprove application of livestock confinement facility for Hawker Farms Two LLC in section thirty-two of Lake Township. Who's you representing the board of adjustment? You want to come up and talk?
Don't make it sound like you're standing up.
Is that right?
I'm Dave Lee from the Board of Adjustment. We're not to discuss this, consider the approval of this application. And we based our decision on several different things. There was a lot of citizens there telling us it was a wet area. We know it's been a wet area. This map here shows the new drainage tiles in the, they have tiled the north half of the south half section, the quarter section, the southeast corner where this property is said. They have not tiled clear down to that corner. However, all the neighbors, including Mr. Spencer that's lived there since the forties as a kid, told us that that property has always been wet. I know it's been wet for forty years that I've been driving by it. And this is a survey from Reich and Engineering. And it was surveyed for modern concepts. It describes the property by proprietors James and Don Rasmussen, Timothy and Jolene Rasmussen, survey for modern concepts. Notes two, county recorder's miscellaneous book twenty, page four eighteen describes this corner as the northeast corner, south half, southwest corner, and shows it being on the east line of the southwest quarter. This is an erroneous call as the full southwest quarter was never created on the original government survey. Only the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter was created and the remainder of the south half of section thirty-two was lauded due to an impossible marsh. Therefore, this corner was treated as a property corner only and not as a quarter, a quarter corner as said. Quarter by quarter corner never existed per the original government land office township flat map. We felt that this isn't a marsh. It's always been wet. And their tiles that they put in, they tiled clear over and going into the dredge ditch across Utah. And so the field is dry on the north half of that southeast quarter. But down where this confinement is, if you look at it, the field is high and it runs right down to that corner. We feel that there is a wet corner. And so we denied the permit. We didn't want groundwater contamination there into the roads and on over into the dredge ditch where it traveled along south to the mall where a lot of towns use a drinking water. So the permit was denied. If anybody wants to see that, that's their survey that was faxed to Pat's office.
Did you have full board that night? How many's on?
Uh, we had four of us there.
What was the vote?
Unanimous, denied.
Do you have that copy with those names on there?
Dave, has any drains been approved since then? Is there enough tile to get that water someplace else referred?
There's the new tiles right here. We're talking right here in the corner, south of that. The white lines are the new tiles that they put in.
Are there crops being ruined, what they call the marsh land?
There's corn growing in there, yes. It was raining pretty good the day we was out there and the ditch had water in it and it was, but you can see the, by sitting there looking at the corn, of course, the corner was lower where we was at in that corner, but you can sit across the road from it and you can see the whole thing running right to that corner that holds off that.
So where does the water go then if it's all running down?
I didn't follow, trace that on out to see just where it did go. This is a drainage map and it looks like it goes on south down across this patch here. This is the drainage ditch.
Under the building storage?
I didn't see where from this corner where it went to. I didn't.
That's in district thirty-two according to your map?
That is town, Lake Township, section thirty-two.
Is that David Greenage?
No, it's, these are supposed to be.
It's not in the district?
If you can make a hangout of that map, I can make a hangout of it.
Forty-six is above that.
Forty-six is above it. Eighty-two is right there.
I would say it's, yeah, eighty-six maybe?
One more working.
You can't read their maps, I tend to.
It's, well, it's, you know.
There's the, those are two drainage maps that we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lake Township, section thirty-two.
Where's tile ran to in your?
And the lowest corner probably is right at the, right at the corner.
It would be.
Quite often.
Is that the part they tiled both Steve, down there in that corner?
No.
I don't know if the building's in right in that corner.
Maybe not.
Most of it will be in the north part.
When Rasmussen's bought it, they tiled this area right here, the new white lines are tiled, runs right over here and into the dredge ditch.
There you go.
They're talking right down here in this corner.
Right. Yeah, they ran that down to the ditch there.
Yeah, they've run their tiles over to the dredge ditch across Utah. And they're on both sides of Utah there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's in DD six.
That's DD six. But the building's gonna sit right down here, right?
Well, it'll be contained.
No, building's gonna be on.
Buildings gonna be sit, they don't have six.
Right.
They put in the eight foot pit underneath of the hog house, both hog houses, to maintain the manure. We.
Underground storage.
Underground storage. We've got our doubts on that because of the hydraulics pushing in from the wet ground. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know whether it would hold or not, but with the marsh ground around, always wet there, we feel that it's a bad choice.
Part of this, this.
Since I've been on the board, this is the first one that's come up where we've denied it.
Yes. I don't know where the tile would be drained out. DNR has the final decision, right?
DNR said they approved it. They look at the setbacks. I don't think they looked at the government survey of this or of the property itself. When the guy met us out there and like we said, we sat in the truck and looked at it, it was raining. The board's recommendation to the supervisors is to deny it and ask DNR to come back and reconsider. That's what we'd like to see.
Did they speak that night at all about, I mean, what they felt as far as the contract or the builder?
Uh.
Was anybody present that night?
Just a gentleman over there.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Um, our first responsibility was to take any site.
What was your?
Our first responsibility was to take any site is to comply with the DNR rules. So DNR has confirmed that we have. The second one is to work with the landowner in which we're purchasing the property from, to put it in a location that's desirable for them. Third one is, can we build on that site? And the fourth one is, is that the best site for the neighborhood? I.e., is it the farthest away that we can get from all the neighbors respectively? The site that we've chosen complies with all those. That's why we ventured into a purchase agreement and submitted the permit for that site. This site costs well over a million dollars. We do about fifty of these a year. We feel like we have a very good handle on where's a good site for construction wise and where's not. And we deem this one, it was fine to construct in, farthest away from all the neighbors that we can get on the property in which Rasmussen's wanted us to work with. And the DNR has reviewed the manure management plan as well as the setbacks and complied with that, that we are indeed complying with their rules.
You're representing who?
Um, New Modern Concepts, which will be the construction company for the site.
The construction company.
Yep.
His name's under command here.
Does DNR still have the trump card no matter what we do?
If we turn it down, then appeal to the EPC.
If you turn it down, it'll go to the DNR. They'll most likely issue the permit. And then you'll have fifteen days to decide whether you want to deny it again or do nothing. If you do nothing, it becomes a valid permit. If you deny it, then if, the option for the, the county is you have to go in front of the EPC, basically explain to the DNR why you think they were wrong. Because they approved the permit, they said it's a good permit, you said it's not. So now the argument's between the county and the DNR and you have to bring proof to the EPC that the DNR scored or cited the site improperly.
Well, according to their application, they got more than enough points to meet all the requirements. Comments from the public? Anybody have anything to add?
You commented that.
Can you say your name, please?
Kathy Johnson. You commented that all of the neighbors have been notified. All of us surrounding the area have not been notified. None of us has started back in December two thousand thirteen. And your matrix didn't give that a point. Why was that not considered? Why doesn't Rasmussen put it back down where they live? In Reich County?
Any other comments from the public?
My main concern is for the water. If it's gonna be contaminated by this building.
Looks to me like the more information we have, we ought to let DNR come back and look at it again rather than us. I, I don't even want, I've never driven by there, so I'm not able to make a good judgment myself, just going on what we see on paper. And what the matrix says, now the matrix, you can get a lot of points without satisfying all the different little areas. They can be in terrible shape in one part of the matrix, you get enough points someplace else and still pass. So that's probably the reason all the neighbors weren't contacted. Because you got enough points without it.
If you look in the matrix, none of the neighbors around the area were contacted. They did not take any points for contacting the neighbors.
Well, that being said. But they still have plenty of community.
They had points to get.
All right, and that being said though, then, along with these lines, I mean, Dave sits on the board of adjustment and their duty is to review these initially and meet with the public and normally in the bottom of most cases, they do get approval right away, get approval. In this case, with four to zero vote against it and they're doing their due diligence, I would, I feel strongly probably that we probably should send it back to DNR to have them at least review it and go from there. Get some comments, feedback. I think we need more information. And some of the things that Dave brought out this morning should be addressed and with that. Even if we deny it, we'll still have to deny it again if we feel strongly about it, but I think it gives the opportunity for their board to follow up and find out, give their answers. That would be my thought.
I can agree with Jerry there because you've done your job and we, that's what the board of adjustments is for.
Your point is, we need to, we respect your input and, you know, you go out and do your job and we try to do ours based on the information you bring to us, so.
Well, like I said, I don't know how many years I've been on the board, but this is the first one that's really been in a wet area. There's a couple others that we questioned, but we did go ahead and let them go through. This is the first one that we've denied and it says it's a marsh and all the neighbors tell us it's wetland and marsh and we've gotta, we've gotta kinda weigh that in, so.
Your base and your decision on what information you have for us.
Right. And I was, Louis Folletson and myself was the two guys off the board that did meet with the DNR out there that day. And we commented that it was a wet area, everything drained to it. And he says the setbacks to the neighbors and everything was fine. So that's where we was at, so. Kathy Johnson is the closest one of them. I can't hardly read that unless you get it in the light in their matrix.
Two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, it's just a half a mile from him.
Do you have soil needs or anything in your staff? Is the soil type, is there any drainage obstruction there?
The soil types are looked at as part of the DNR process for two things, karst and alluvial soils. We also look at them from a construction point of view, are they suitable soils to build in? And again, the site passed all three of those requirements. Not alluvial, not karst, they have their soils in which dig and can pass and hold, hold well.
They also said in here that in one manner that it was possible karst soil. But they were going off of an old map, so.
The state geologist has a letter in there that says it's not karst soil.
Well, I've heard all this scheduling heard this one and I hate to go just to board, I hate to put something down, but I think it's probably in our order to disapprove this and let the DNR come back and come again, maybe to change their mind, I don't know. But I would move we disapprove the application at this point.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I think there's, you know, there's possible other places that could build this. You know, I'm not against the buildings, probably the location. I think we need it someplace.
Well, I think this is an opportunity for everybody to step back, reanalyze, see if anybody wants to change their position or relocate or not. If it gets approved by the DNR, then you have, if they, I think they need to just review it another time. They need to know that there was some concern and this is how you get a chance, take it maybe a little harder look at it.
Yeah.
And like to have their opinion coming back, what their final say is after they review it again. I think that would help everybody, especially the board supervisors.
Well, I've met with several of the DNR people, different ones, this is another new fellow, but I've met with several of them on several different confinements and the main thing they looked at is the setback from the housing. And he come right out and said that that's what they was looking at, the setback was good and everything, so. I don't know whether they looked at the, this year, the survey. I don't know whether they have that or not. Just come in the morning of our meeting and it was back some new concepts.
They may not have seen it yet.
Right.
I think the motion would be for fear of runoff groundwater contamination, reason for my motion, surface water and groundwater pollution, contamination.
So you got that Peggy? I'm gonna read that for the, once you get it turned in.
Moved by Matt, seconded by Peterson, denying return application to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for livestock confinement facility for Hawker Farms Two LLC in section thirty-two of Lake Township for the following reasons, surface water and groundwater contamination.
Is that all right, board? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion considered. Thanks, Dave.
After more discussion, we have to change your minds.
I'm not even, well, I'm not, I don't even know.
Always for the traffic.
Yeah. Yeah, right there.
Tom can take over for a minute.
At the end of the chairman, we'll move ahead to end with Richard regarding public safety.
You're on, so you have a chair to apply.
Can I please stand?
You sure can.
I suffer from spinal arthritis, so it's easier to stand than it is.
Is that long enough?
I live directly across the street here on the corner and we've been there quite some time. And I've addressed Mr. Lee when he was the mayor and I've addressed our present mayor this summer about getting more deputies, plural. I understand you've been acquainted with what goes on in the courtrooms here in Iowa lately and have been requested to have a deputy for future court sessions. And I believe in that. But I also see every day the terrible traffic we have here. From my picnic table, I can see three intersections, one right out here on Third Street. Nobody stops. We were putting in flowers and trees one afternoon over on our house. I counted eighty-nine cars that used that intersection. Out of that eighty-nine, two came to complete stop. Eighty-nine of them treat it like it's a curve, just around the corner and away every day. We've heard screeching tires, honking horns, people cursing and swearing at each other because people pull out into the intersections without even looking. I sat here one afternoon and watched everybody that works at the school across the street drive through that stop sign without even tapping their brakes. I called George Breder. He said, "Well, young man, we'll handle that." Three months later, nothing had changed. So I got ahold of Greg Darling. He said, "Well, I'll take care of that. We're not gonna have our teachers and staff doing that." Nothing changed. In fact, one of the teacher's associates pulled out in front of a truck and got bumped in the rear end. Now she's got a dent there. She didn't even look. And that's not the only problem. I've seen kids on what they call these crotch rockets, those Japanese bikes with a lot of horsepower, come up the hill on one wheel, going so fast that it's just a blur as they go by. No helmet, no nothing, no mufflers, which is another concern. Living on the hill, we hear every motorcycle, every pickup, every car, and now every semi-tractor that goes up and down that hill with no mufflers. Dean was at our last city council meeting up here and said flat out when I said, "Where's an officer when you need one?" And he said, "We are everywhere. We are shorthanded." He said, "There will be a proposal coming up to have one of our deputies in the courtroom during court proceedings. He says that will shorthand us again." I asked why and he said, "We are the process servers for the county. We transport prisoners. We transport people for mental evaluation." And he said, "That ties up one to two deputies for an entire day." He said, "We are so shorthanded that we are literally running on fumes as far as deputies go." And at that time, quite a few of them had signed up to take vacation. And he said, "We are even more shorthanded now. We're asking the deputies on duty to put in overtime so that we do have coverage." And he says, "That's a great expense to the county." He says, "The only thing we can do is, is hire more deputies." He said, "That's the only thing we can do." He said, "Right now, being process servers and transporters is eating up so many hours." I had one suggestion, can't we do like a lot of larger cities and counties? Hire privateers to do the process serving. Pay them what you would pay a deputy to do that job. And thusly free up one man for all those duties. I know we can't ask privateers to transport prisoners or take people for mental evaluation. That is something an officer needs to do. But we need better coverage. I also understand that Dakota City has a contract that pays either the county or the city enforcement people a thousand a year for coverage. And that's pretty minimal. I think it should be raised. We should have better coverage and we should have more deputies in line that can do traffic enforcement because, like I said, we've heard screeching tires, people cussing people out. We've seen so many close calls and now we've got kids in school. And kids are kids. They don't look, they just run out in the street because they wanna get across or they're riding their bicycle. They don't stop at a stop sign.
What's been the response then from the city, Dakota City, as far as additional funds for that type of coverage?
They said they were gonna look into it. And that's all they said.
And then along with the school principal and superintendent, is there anything that you think they could do to help out? I mean, some kind of signs or, I mean, what, is there anything there that would help?
I, I think.
Outside of law enforcement?
I think they need to send all the people that work for them and drive as terribly as they do, send them back to driver's ed. I mean, that sounds facetious and people are gonna chuckle, but when you see the truck that they, from the high school, come around this corner, drive through the stop sign, come around at Main Street, not even look and drive around the stop sign and go down the hill, that tells me one- even look and drive around the stop sign and go down the hill, that tells me one, the driver doesn't care. It, it's not just their lives. They're endangering other people. And it's not right. We need more traffic enforcement officers. Humboldt does not patrol up here. Dean's crew does. And Dean has said, "We are just sorely understaffed for the amount of work we have to do."
We are trying to put on a new officer, which will help. I mean, we understand the need, we understand the cost of the overtime. I, I mean, that's not really the total solution, but it's the direction we have to head because of the amount of work that needs to be done.
Yes.
This courtroom thing is a big additional cost of time and expense, you know, to have somebody present, not knowing what court days are going to be and how many hours per day, so that's kind of a loose thing, but...
I think our, like you said, like you said, our transportation of our mental evaluation system really eats up their time, because sometimes they take them there and they sit there for four or six hours waiting.
Yes.
And then they take them somewhere else.
Yes.
And then they have to come back and get them in a day.
You're right. Like Dean said, that, that takes one man out of the loop for at least one day. And, he said, when we get called out to, uh, domestic disturbances, he said, "It, it's something we have to face. It's part of our duty. It takes two officers, because you, you can't go in there without backup. You cannot." That, that's the worst situation in the world for any officer. And he says, "So, we've got two people tied up for anywhere from two to four to six hours on a domestic disturbance." Uh, and again, the process serving. He says, "Yes, we do it, and it ties up at least one man all day long." So, that's one more out of the loop. He says, "If we've got prisoners to transport, if we've got people that need to go for their mental evaluation, that ties up another man." He said, "We are just literally running on fumes." And he said, "When I left the meeting, I said, 'Dean, I know what you're doing. I, I know it's a good job. I know your men are doing a good job, but I think you're spread awful thin.'" He says, "Yes, we are." He says, "I hope you get somewhere with us." And I said, "Well, my next stop is the courthouse and talk to the supervisors." And here I am. I know we need better traffic enforcement from our, our county deputies. We do. I, I've told Dean, "You could set up radar at the top of the hill and, and completely fill a ticket book every day of the week." I see ladies going down the hill, and I'm not knocking them, per se, with their shoulder holding their cellphone, their knee steering a car, their minivan, kids in the back, and they're, they're doing their eye makeup, going downhill at a rapid rate of speed, and I think that's child abuse. Why isn't somebody there to stop this? I mean, yes, we're human. Yes, we need to schedule our lives better, but good golly, that is just ridiculous. The people, uh, know what they're boning. He agrees. The main street we have here has just become literally the Humboldt County dragway. People race up and down, up and down all day long, thirty-five, forty miles an hour, like it's no big deal. Nobody's going to catch me. Nobody cares. The kids race their motorcycles up the hill.
Well, I think at this point, maybe Harland, if you would, maybe we should just talk to Dean, ask him if he's got any solutions on, not solutions, maybe ideas that can improve that aren't, you know, big cost items. And, I mean, Dean would, Dean would know the best way that he could handle it. Maybe we need to have certain times of the day that he goes through there. I mean, that's all we can do.
We're in the process. We're getting the okay to-
Hire another person.
Hire another deputy. Yes.
I mean, that'll help to some degree.
That'll help some. We don't have it in the budget, so, I mean, we're, we're stretched. Well, it's like these drainage taxes. I'm going over to pay them. I, I don't fully understand them, but I know it's, it's my duty as a property owner to pay them. That's on me. I'm not going to complain. Dean's treated us very well ever since he was elected. Uh, he's done a good job. I, I think he's done an admirable job for the people he has to work with. But I do believe if we could lighten his load so he, he could spread his men out a little better, and privatizing the process serving would be one way that we could basically get one man back. And that's about all I've got to say. I've, I've wasted enough time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, you ready?
Good morning. Two items of business this morning. First is approved construction on county right-of-way request from Larry Lane for tile crossing on Two Sixtieth Street, uh, the Level B portion in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of, uh, Section Twenty-Six, Corinth Township. Mr. Lane has requested to try to drain part of the, uh, north side of the farmstead. Uh, Mr. Jensen has, uh, put it, pegged it as probably four acres. I'd say it's that or less. And, uh, as we looked at it and discussed it, uh, we are changing this request to, uh, a work in the right-of-way permit to cross the road at no county cost and no county requirements, and owner responsibility. In other words, he, we're allowing him to cross the road with a small tile to drain this. Uh, we're not requiring the normal crossing requirements, uh, due to the, uh, he owns both sides of the road. Uh, it's small acreage and encountered, and it's on Level B road.
Shouldn't be a problem?
No.
Motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second. And then Larry, you'll take care of the, as far as, uh, traffic control and everything with Jensen. How are we going to handle that?
That's with the, that's with the normal work in the right-of-way permit.
Okay, okay.
I mean, then he, the contractor covers that. We do have a proof of insurance with Jensen.
An hour maybe?
Yeah, I didn't think it'd take very long. He was like a six, nine, yeah. Six or five.
How deep will that have to go across? Or any idea? Well, it's not very deep. It's just, uh, with our new construction, we did that, we just can't even use that north side with-
Because of the water retention.
It's so wet now, I'm not sure we need to get in there, because that all drains down into there.
Okay.
Just to make the site more useful, just a little access to get down.
His building line up there is probably the peak, and then from the buildings north comes toward the road, and that's what he's trying to drain.
All right, I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? No, own favor?
Aye. Uh, and second order of business is approve voluntary transfer for secondary roads employee from Bode Maintenance Area to the Dakota City Maintenance Area. I, Mike Mayall, accept voluntary transfer from the Bode Maintenance Area to the Dakota City Maintenance Area.
Be a short and dry form.
Yeah. I just made a copy for the board.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
To second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
We are working some of the kinks out, uh, the areas and the routes, uh, we're playing, as we've talked about in the past. Uh, we have routes that we're going to play with and move and shift. Mainly his snow route will be everything south of the river, north of Highway Three. Now, with the exception of the Whipple Road, um, that's the first proposed, uh, lane out there which sends him west, much in the same area he plowed snow before, and then shifted, uh, people so that the remainers coming out of Bode would cover the rest of it. But anyway, more on that later, but right now, this works well for us.
Okay, own favor?
Aye.
Opposed, taken, carried.
Uh, finally, bridge is coming along. We should have a, um, depending, we should be looking at a deck port toward the end of the week here on the bridge west of Livermore. Um, steel is down. Now they have to set four, or the rails and the, and, um, paving machine and, and set final grade on the bridge. I do have, uh, hot off the press. Looks like we got a lot of stuff, which we do.
Sale bill.
Stuff for the county sale. Um, again, that is, uh, Tuesday, September twenty-third at five-thirty. I told him to lugger up good to make sure he's done for dark.
Yeah, yeah. Dark comes pretty quick now.
I know, and it, uh, we like the, uh, nine o'clock dark, but that's come and gone.
I got one thing for you.
Yes.
I have a couple complaints about the sign on Moon Tree Road in the fourth corner, where it says, "Four," six miles that way. I've had several people talk to me about the visibility of that corner, that sign. And I have driven up and looked. It is at a poor placement. If you stop where you're supposed to stop, you can't see down the road.
Oh, low tree out on the south end out here going, where somebody put it out there right at the right-of-way.
Yeah. Just, just stop and take a look.
No, I've seen it.
Have you?
There's another one. When you're coming from Bode, going, you get to the Rutland Corner, there's some trees coming up before that lane going up into that house there. And if there's a motorcycle coming, you're not going to see them. You can pull right out in front of it.
Where's that, Mark?
Rutland Corner.
Okay.
Coming from Bode.
So, the trees, and which side are the issue there?
On the north side, right on the, just a little bit after the corner, before the driveway, there's a couple of trees coming up.
On the east end.
Yeah, going east, yeah.
Northeast corner of intersection. That I should know. I drive it every day, and I've seen that.
Just look at it next time.
At all, that, that, uh, we have a few of those kind of things around.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, very good. Um, we have, uh, talked to, uh, Mid-American Subs. Uh, we've reviewed all the temporary accesses, uh, for the power line installation. Uh, and I have a proposed work on the right-of-way permit, uh, that's going to our county attorney, and we might turn it soon because they want to be in the county soon, like this week if the weather holds up. Um, and I think, uh, most of it is, as we've discussed, uh, work on the right-of-way permit as we've requested all along. Um, about all the poles will be outside the right-of-way and roughly every thousand feet. And we loaded everything. When we got back home, everything worked right in our office, but not here.
Julie? Should I open this now?
Yeah. I, I'm also with the counselor with CFR. This is Lori Lawman. Would you like to just sit up for a close-up?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I have a question.
Yeah, give me your chair.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And I am, I have to have you guys share if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I chair with Peggy.
No, that's fine.
Um, again, I'm Julie Bycian from Community and Family Resources. I'm a prevention specialist.
And this is Lori Lawman. You are official title? Substance Abuse Counselor.
Substance Abuse Counselor. We're both from CFR. We're actually here for an incredible, uh, thing, just a very encouraging thing. This is September, and September is known as Recovery Month. And what we're asking is, um, the Board of Supervisors to, um, acknowledge, not only acknowledge, uh, Recovery Month, but to support the community in this. We know that, um, not only substance abuse, but also, uh, mental health issues is a really big issue right now. And there's a stigma attached to that. You know, most people, when you look at someone who has mental, um, any kind of mental illness or substance abuse, we look at them and put them in a little corner and say, "Well, you know, those are those people." But what we want to show you all and encourage you all to do is to look at these people and say, "You know what? Um, yes, there's mental illness, there is substance abuse. It is far-ranging. It is very, um, you know, prevalent in this county, and we want to acknowledge their recovery, that there is hope for them." I'm going to read just a few statistics. The reason why there's two thousand and eleven statistics is we still, it takes a while for all of the new statistics to come out, so that's why the two thousand and eleven statistics. But, uh, three hundred and ninety-two thousand islands have a mental illness, and two hundred and sixteen thousand islands have a substance abuse disorder in two thousand and eleven. The impact of mental and substance abuse disorders is apparent in our local community. Frequently, mental illness and substance abuse disorders are experienced together, so we're finding that they go hand in hand. It's kind of the chicken or the egg. You know, do they have a, a mental illness before they came, came with the substance abuse, or did this substance abuse cause some of the mental illness? And that's something where, um, you know, if you have questions specifically, she can answer. We're seeing also in Humboldt County, there's a high rate of, um, suicide, very high rate in this county particularly, and it could have a high rate of, of mental illness, substance abuse, okay, gathered together. So, this isn't just all of Iowa. This is very specific also to Humboldt County. Um, what we're asking from you all is just to make a formal proclamation that you're willing to support those in recovery. Um, and part of that proclamation is for twenty-four years, Recovery Month has worked to improve the lives of those affected by mental or substance abuse disorders by raising awareness of these diseases and educating communities about the prevention, treatment, and recovery resources that are available. For the above reasons, um, you, um, Harland would be asking the citizens of Humboldt County to join in celebrating this September as National Recovery Month. So, do you have any questions? I brought along Lori, just because she has specific answers mostly to your questions, and if she doesn't know the answer, see, we can, we can find those answers. Um, but we do want to just encourage those who have any kind of mental illness or substance abuse to know that they have the support of the community.
We've had discussions about our overloading of law enforcement. I think what you folks are doing is great service to the community, and I see no reason why we wouldn't want to support this proclamation.
Yeah, I heard, um, when you were talking about people who are, uh, transporting, um, those who are doing evaluations and stuff like that, a lot of what we can do, we can, we can partner with you to help, and a, a lot of the load of, of some of these things that are coming up, you know, that's our job. Um, for example, you know, we're here to not only, um, help the community with those with mental and substance abuse, but help those supervisors, for example. We've worked, uh, within the county to do training on substance abuse and, and, and that, so that those who are employing others can be aware of it, to know where those resources are. Most of our resources are free, and, um, and we're here to support you in some of these things that are coming up in your community, so.
That's worth it. CFR complaints. Yes, they're both challenging.
Yeah, but obviously, you're in town. It's open, what, seven days a week, maybe one day a week?
For CFR, for, well, we have so many different, like, I'm in prevention, so I'm here, I'm, I work in the schools. Um, I work with some of the, uh, businesses and training them. We're just, Lori works, um, in the office with her.
I'm here on Wednesdays, most of the day on Wednesday.
But, you know, we, we're here to meet the needs, so if there's an increase in need, we're there to help, um, make that aware and meet those needs. So, if there is something that you are needing, please, you know, speak to us about that, and we will try to help in any way we can. That's what we're here for, and that's what we would like to see. But more than us, it's the whole community coming together and realizing that there is a stigma, and we want to remove that stigma and to encourage those to not only seek help, but to know that there is hope and there is recovery.
Just a clarification, that's Julie, we had you down. But Lori, is your name L-O-R-I?
Right, correct.
L-O-R-I? And then what again was your last name?
Lawman, L-A-W-M-A-N.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Well, I think, um, you know, beyond the CFR, I think we're recognizing more and more of the dual treatments, and it's, it's a big issue. I think a lot of these are, they kind of coincide, and it's really hard to determine which leads to which one, but I think it works both ways, you know, and we're going to have to continue to deal with these issues and do a better job. And I know it takes more time and money and resources to work through these problems, because they're not as simple as just one addiction or the other, so.
Exactly.
That being said, I think it's a very good thing to support. I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve. Uh, what do you say? That's where we have?
Proclamation?
Proclamation. There you go. Formal proclamation. Chairman has signed the formal proclamation for National Recovery Month.
Thank you.
I take the motion.
Any other discussion?
In that discussion, I think that's part of the marketing program, and I think that's one of the things you really need to do, is you offer a great service, but a lot of people aren't aware of it. This is one way to help bring people aware of what's going on.
Absolutely, and that's what we really, really want, to let them know that we're here in this community. For not only that, but for a variety of different reasons, all the way from gambling to substance abuse to mental health issues. So, we cover that gamut. Thank you for, um, making that aware and encouraging the community in this way. I appreciate it.
It would be nice if you could look to see if there isn't someone or an organization out there who could help us with our mental transports, because most of the time, our deputies are on overtime or doing that. It's very expensive, makes us shorthanded.
Do you have a card or something that I could find the answer to that and give back to you? Is there something that I could? Um, or anywhere- Or anywhere?
Chair with you.
Yeah, I can, of course, I have a chair with me.
Great. That would be nice, yeah.
I'm sure all the other counties in the surrounding area have the same problems.
Absolutely.
And like I say, most of the time deputies go out, it's quite often on overtime hours if they sit there.
I will find the answer to that some way and we'll get back to you about that. And that's mostly transport for mental health evaluations.
Yes, just evaluations. We're trying to find them a bed and transporting them to the bed.
Okay. Where are you getting the patients from? Is it somewhere specific that they're coming in from? Or are they just-
Just a- Just within the county transport to hospital where they're fed.
Okay. I will do that for finding-
Hospital to hospital.
Okay.
Sometimes you have to, you have to have them on the office. Sometimes you know.
Yeah. I'll just find me up if that's what. Yes, but thank you.
No, we did.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
All right. We save the toughest to last.
You better believe it.
Carl asked me to come. I'm sort of playing messenger today, so I'm not sure how much you know, but just to quick catch you up to speed, we've got a significant daycare issue in this county. And it fell on our lap, R being H C D A, because it became a workforce issue. So now we've got people calling in sick because their in-home daycare provider is sick or gone or whatever and don't have backup or backup's sick. So it became an issue not only for retention and workforce quality, but also in recruiting. So, you know, if I'm being recruited to the hospital, let's say, I want to, you know, where do you daycare? And there just aren't enough openings in this county. So I should specify quality openings. So kind of catch you up to speed, we've been working with our saviors to have a daycare center in the basement of the church. It's a Band-Aid at best. We could service about forty-five children total and we probably need to service four times that. So it definitely will help, but it won't solve the issue. Solving the issue is a bigger project that we're working on, hoping that the project that we're working on, we can add a daycare center to that facility. So we do have a continuum. The plan is to try to do it in our saviors now and then work our way up to a newer facility when it's applicable. So committee's been assembling, oh geez, probably for two years-ish, and really just kind of jumped the fence here in the past few months. We've had a lot more complaints about it. And actually, we were going to wait until we could just build a new facility and we just had far too many complaints. So that's what sparked the continued conversation with our saviors. So at this point, we're kind of just raising awareness. It is a workforce issue, which is why our Board of Directors is supportive of the project and the time that we've invested into it. But I think we need to make sure that we're sharing the message that it's an issue and we understand that we're doing the best that we can to try to remedy that. So like I said, Carl asked me to come update you. If you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. But at this point, that's kind of where we're at, is here's the issue. We see it. We know we need to do something about it and we're trying real hard to do something. So I think it'll be, when we look at the services that H C D A provides, you know, I tell you every year, certainly business recruitment and retention, but these are some of those benefits that fall into retention and recruitment that we need to make sure that we're servicing the businesses on the back end. So it is an issue. We know that. The school district gets plenty of crying mother calls. I've gotten a few myself, so we're doing the best that we can. And we'll work certainly very hard in the next few months to make sure that we can get something done. Our next step in moving forward, I believe Sunday, our saviors' congregation will have a discussion on whether to approve this in the basement of the church, provided that that goes well. The plan will be to tour other daycare centers. You know, I've made the comment before, and I stand firm, if we do it, we have to do it right. Certainly, we as an H C D A organization, we as a community, don't want to start something that's not going to work. So what models are working? What does that structure look like? How is that funding being received? And what's the most successful model that we can try to mimic? So our next step is to tour a couple of facilities in the area and see how they're doing it. And certainly, sort of reinventing the wheel, we'll piggyback on some of those models. So just here to say, hey, it's an issue. We'll do the best that we can to get it fixed. And if you hear of anything-
As you mentioned, I've been in this committee for a year or so.
Yep.
And the need is some startup funds. I think the city's getting involved, maybe the hospital, maybe some community people, maybe this school. I know the county has some veteran funds and I was hoping maybe we could spare a little bit of that money to help just for startup. What's some of the startup costs we've got involved?
Well, that's part of this research that we want to do. So our first thought, my first thought was, let's just get it started in our saviors and then let's save the massive capital campaign to the businesses and to the moms and dads for when we move to a larger facility. That was how I processed it. Because it just made more sense since it's a Band-Aid and, you know, I hate to go to the businesses and say, "Hey, this is going to solve your needs," but I plan to take fifteen babies, you know? So it made sense to do it that way. As we've been looking into it, it may make more sense to just do the full-out campaign now and just publicly tell the people that this is a Band-Aid, this is our temporary location. We intend to relocate at a time to be determined.